I'm Perlowe Gil Laverio and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held, actually in person and via web meeting. So, welcome. And you can also watch this on the city, the channel, is it Channel 26 on television, also on YouTube. Following roll call during the summary hearing procedures, we'll review how to handle, how the public may provide comment during today's session. Roll call. Commissioner Lardinoa.
Here.
Commissioner Barocio.
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Casey. Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Arnellis Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Young. And myself here. And we're all happy to be here in person. It's nice to see everyone's shiny, happy face that we've been conducting these meetings for quite a while remotely, but are happy to be here in person. So as follows our summary of hearing procedure. The procedure for this hearing is the follow. After a staff report, applicants and appellants may make a five-minute presentation. City staff will call out names of the public who identify the items that you want to speak on. If you are not here, you may identify yourself by the raise hand feature on the web meeting or click star nine on the phone. As your name is called, city staff will unmute you and each speaker will have up to two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have double the time. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Staff will unmute the speaker to respond to the commissioner. The public hearing will then be closed and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request its staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or unwritten correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.12400 of the municipal code provides procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditionalist permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 20.100.220 of the municipal code, pardon me. So we'll call to order and we will remind everyone that we have a code and conduct and everyone needs to be polite. And if you're not polite and you disrupt the meeting, you may be potentially removed from the committee. So this meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. And at this point in time, I wanted to turn to the city attorney which observes our Planning Commission meetings and acts as our legal counsel as he wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to make sure if there were any ex-party communications that anyone wanted to disclose to do so now. And ex-party communications or any communications you might have had with members of the public or folks who have interest in the items on today's agenda? And if not, if nothing to disclose, then we can continue with the meeting.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. This is for comments, this is for items not on the Planning Commission agenda, but that do pertain to municipal government. The speaker would have that opportunity to speak at this time. So for the public comment, I don't have a card from anyone here in person. Staff, is there anyone on the hybrid or online version that wants to speak on public comment? I think that's a no, is that correct?
We do have one hand raised.
We do have one. Where's that voice come from?
I'm not sure where it's coming from, but this is Danielle.
Okay, great. So Danielle's remote, right? Okay, great, because it was sort of this mysterious voice. Okay, just needed to figure that out. Otherwise, I need a medication. Okay.
Okay, Zen, please unmute your device and go ahead with your comment.
Okay. Give me just a second here. I wrote it down so that I don't get frazzled. I'm a bit late to the party here in terms of the topic. I have only recently become aware of the Kuzher Affordable Housing Project in District Nine and quickly discovered that it, as well as all of the other similar projects, makes highly inadequate provisions for parking spaces for the future residents. The future units will be occupied by working men and women, all in dire need of either acquiring or maintaining employment, for which automobiles are absolutely essential. It is unconscionable that Kuzher, for example, is to have fewer parking spots than it does units. It should have a separate parking spot for each adult living in the complex. Now, I'm well aware of SB 35. I'm aware of the ministerial approval process. I'm also aware of the special exemption that has been granted regarding parking space. Barring any other inadequacies, for example, questions regarding zoning or environmental impact, the city will probably have to allow these projects to move forward. But neither the city nor the county, to my understanding, are required to fund these endeavors. And I would strongly encourage the funding to be withheld. Homelessness is extremely pervasive throughout San Jose. I believe it behooves us to use all the available resources to house and in short order, as many individuals as we possibly can. The unhouse our dire need of shelters as well as professional psychiatric care. Construction projects such as Kuzher do not address any of these concerns and siphon away public funds desperately needed elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be now moving on to opening the General Plan Hearing 2023 Cycle One. And based on the comments in the agenda, staff would like us to start with the 2022 General Plan Annual Performance Review. Is that correct, staff? Where it has the comment that it says to be heard prior to general plan consent and general plan public hearing items?
That's correct. We do have to do consent, right, with the eight minutes? With the meeting? Oh, do we not have meeting minutes last time, right? So?
No, you're correct. We do have consent calendar for the minutes. So do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And is there a second? Great. Staff?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Commissioner Lardinoa. Before we move on, is there anyone on hand who can help with technical difficulties with the monitors? Oh, yeah. Thank you.
All right. And then, staff, are, will we be doing a display of our votes via the console or do we do voice votes? Okay. All those, so the motion's on the table. There's a first, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So now we'll be moving on to the presentation by staff of the General Plan Annual Performance Review.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is Sanita Gochal, Supervising Planner in the Citywide Planning Division Section. And I'm joined here this evening by Planner Laura Maurer and Deputy Director of Citywide Planning, Michael Brio, and my other colleagues. We also have Wilson Tam online, virtually. He is the Transportation Planning Manager from the Department of Transportation to respond to any comments that we may have tonight. So today, we are presenting the highlights of the Envision San Jose 2040 Fiscal Year 2021/2022 Annual Performance Review Report. The General Plan specifies that one annual review hearing is to be held for the Planning Commission and the city council to review and consider privately proposed amendments to the general plan and to evaluate its performance measures. Tonight is the 2022 General Plan Annual Review Hearing, and this annual performance review report fulfills the evaluation requirement. The General Plan sets forth a vision and a comprehensive roadmap to guide the city's continued growth through the year 2040. It contains goals, policies, and 12 major strategies, as you see in this slide, to achieve the vision of the general plan, and it guides standards for city services, land use patterns, and the quality of life and development. The annual performance evaluation report is organized around these 12 major strategies and based on data from the fiscal year 2021/2022. For this evening's presentation, we are going to give an overview of each of these strategies and will present a summary of the implementation highlights for each of them. Laura and I will be dividing the presentation. I will first cover eight strategies, not necessarily in the numeric order you see there, and Laura will then present the rest of them. As I go along, I will remind you of the strategies that I leave behind and that Laura will pick up later on. So before we get to the details of the report, here is a very broad background of San Jose's growth. San Jose was founded in 1777 and had a population of 66 people and was largely an agricultural city for the next 170 years. Following World War II and particularly beginning in the 1950s, as you can see in this map with the sharp gradient, there was a large boom in the area and population growth and a change in the economy. This was due to a combination of factors, including many federal policies which made it possible for families to buy homes in the suburbs and the availability of plenty of land, which was annexed in the city in the 1950s and 1960s. Here is the General Plan Land Use Transportation Diagram as shown in the Envision San Jose 2040. The past land use patterns have resulted in a predominance of low-density single-family residential uses. Forty-three percent of the city's total land use and 94% of land designated for residential uses, a single-family residential, as you can see in yellow color in this map. Compared to this, only approximately 13.5% is job-generating employment land. These segregated land uses result in fiscal, quality of life, and environmental impacts to San Jose. The goals, policies, and strategies of Envision San Jose 2040 seeks to build a different future for the city. That brings us to the first major strategy, which is community-based planning. This is a commitment to effectively engage all segments of the community in a meaningful planning process. The General Plan goes beyond state requirements for outreach by implementing the city's public outreach policy, which is Council Policy 6-30. Table here shows the number of community meetings held by the Planning Division by fiscal year since the adoption of the General Plan. A majority of the meetings in the last fiscal year were held virtually, but meetings for large projects such as the housing element update or the stationary plans were incorporated, some in-person meetings or workshops. The Planning Division also incorporates various multilingual public outreach modes for community meetings and public hearings. Notices for meetings and public hearings includes messages in multiple languages to inform about the availability of multilingual interpretation services.
Sanita, we can hear you, but it'd be great if you were louder. Can you just move the mic closer? Or move, yeah, move it right up, like, right up to your mouth.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. The Form-Based Plan Major Strategy uses land use designations and general plans' goals and policies to address the form, character, and densities for long-term development in the city. This strategy aims to maintain and create compatible and cohesive neighborhoods while allowing for flexibility within the land use designations. The Citywide Design Guidelines and Downtown Design Guidelines adopted in the last few years utilize these principles. These guidelines help the city facilitate growth, set expectations for high-quality site and building design, and maintain and enhance the character of its neighborhoods and communities. Major Strategy Three, Growth Areas, will be covered by Laura Leader. Major Strategy Four, the Regional Employment Center, aims to transform San Jose from a bedroom community into a regional employment center. The General Plan plans for 382,000 new jobs and sets a goal to reverse the imbalance of jobs to housing. This strategy supports job growth within our existing job centers and transit hubs. One of the primary goals of this major strategy is to achieve a jobs-to-employed-resident ratio of 1.1 jobs for every employed resident. As you can see in this table, the ratio peaked in 2017 since the adoption of the General Plan, but it has gone down since then. The ratios in the past few years likely reflect COVID-19 conditions, unemployment, and shelter-in-place order, and is a result of simultaneous loss of jobs and population. In 2021, the jobs-to-employed-resident ratio is back to 2019 level, though with reduced number of both jobs and employed residents. This graph shows the city's projected job growth out to 2040 and the actual trajectory of our job growth. 382,000 new jobs are planned for over the timeframe of the General Plan. The city would need to average approximately 13,000 new jobs per year to achieve the total planned jobs in the General Plan. The city's job growth is slowing a bit since the adoption of the General Plan in 2011. The city has gained nearly 56,500 new jobs, which is approximately an 18% increase from 2011. And you can see the total number of about 428,000 in this graph. Major Strategy Five will be covered by Laura Leader. Major Strategy Six, The Streetscapes for People emphasizes a human-centered street network supporting a more equitable, environmentally sustainable, economically dynamic, dense, and transit-oriented city. Goals and policies of the General Plan encourage the development of complete communities where residents can walk or bike and have access to parks and trails. 2022 marks a big year for transportation in San Jose. Many streetscape efforts that had been underway were being implemented this year or have been approved by the city council. These efforts will progress towards the General Plan Transportation and Climate Goals by decreasing auto dependence, increasing safety, and making streets designed around people, not vehicles. For example, the table shows the city's progress of implementing new or improved bike facilities per the Better Bike Plan 2025. As of 2022, the city has a 460-mile on-street bike network combined with the existing 63 miles of off-street trails for a total of 523 miles of usable bike network. The city has also recently completed construction of the US 101 Blossom Hill Boulevard Interchange Improvement, which includes a separated pedestrian and bike-only path. The Major Strategy Seven, Measurable Sustainability Strategy, recognizes the General Plan as a tool to minimize impacts on resource consumption, minimize contribution to global warming, and the preservation of the natural environment as it relates to growth and development. Major achievements to improve sustainability in 2022 includes San Jose Clean Energy's expectation of 2022, which is to serve 98% of electricity customers in San Jose with 95% carbon-free power as a base product, and the city council's approval in 2022 of the Move San Jose Plan Emerging Mobility Action Plan and Transit First Policy, which were also guided by Major Strategies Number Six and Number Eleven, and the city council's approval of updated parking and transportation demand management ordinance. Major Strategy Eight, Fiscally Strong City establishes land use goals and policies that promotes a balance of revenue and costs to allow the city to improve delivery of municipal services. A key component of this strategy is to preserve employment lands, since industrial and commercial development has the most beneficial impacts on the city's fiscal health and the ability to provide services. Key measures for determining the city's fiscal health are the general fund and capital and operating budgets. As you can see in this table, the net operating funds and the net capital funds all gained in 2023, 2022, 2023 compared to the previous fiscal year. Major Strategy Nine will be covered by Laura. Major Strategy Ten, Life Amid Abundant Natural Resources promotes the city's natural environment and reinforcement of the urban growth boundary. The strategy also promotes building a world-class trail network and continuing to build parks for the city's residents. Currently, the city has 210 parks and has completed over 60 miles of off-street trails. The overall size of the parks and community facilities developed in CIP has increased by 66.3 million to a number of 421.6 million in the 2023-2027 proposed CIP. Major Strategy 11, Design for a Healthful Community, supports the physical health of the community by promoting walking, bicycling, and encouraging access to healthful foods. As shown in the bottom table, in 2022, there was a drop in drive alone to 75% compared to the previous year and an increase to 10% in walking. This can be attributed to the post-COVID-19 pandemic trend that as more employed residents work from home, they are more likely to make short trips in their neighborhood without a car. Building on the General Plan and Climate Smart Goals and the major strategies you already heard about, in 2022, the city council adopted Move San Jose, a strategic data-and-equity-driven citywide transportation plan that focuses the city's transportation resources on the projects, programs, and policies that will most effectively meet the city's transportation and climate smart goals. In addition, the city has made progress in implementing the Vision Zero Action Plan. Major Strategy 12, Periodic Review establishes a four-year review cycle which provides an opportunity for the city to evaluate changes in planning context and the city's achievement of key goals of the General Plan. Two General Plan four-year reviews has taken place since the adoption of the General Plan in 2011. The last major, the last major review was completed in 2021, December of 2021. And highlights of the changes that were made in the 2021 four-year review cycle included allowing residential uses in underutilized business corridors, removing commercial space requirements from affordable developments, eliminating growth horizons and residential pole policy, increasing planned residential capacity in downtown, updating vehicle miles travel tier-two policy, and removing Coyote Valley as an employment lands growth area. This table lists the four private general plan amendment requests that you will be considering during the hearing later this evening and will be presenting them at that time. Now, I will hand over to Laura, who is going to walk us over the other remaining policies. Laura?
Thank you, Sanita. My name is Laura Maurer. I'm also on the General Plan Team under Sanita, who is my supervisor. So I'll be starting with, going through the same, in the same order, but the ones that she skipped over. So the first one is going to be Major Strategy. So the first one is going to be Major Strategy Number Three, which is Focus Growth. So the Focus Growth Major Strategy focuses new residential and commercial growth capacity in specifically identified growth areas throughout the city. There are four different kinds of growth areas. There are employment areas, urban village and specific plan areas, and downtown itself is a specific area. I will also be going over urban villages in another strategy as well as downtown in another strategy. This approach of focused growth is meant to reduce environmental impacts, improve the city's fiscal health, and preserve established neighborhoods. Can we go back? Do we go back using red? Thank you. So since the adoption of the general plan, there has been 83% of the development, 86% of commercial development, and 81% of industrial development has occurred within these designated growth areas. One of the other items that we look at within the focused growth area is the population of the city of San Jose. And as you can see on the graph, we have had a decrease in population over the last two years, where we had peaked in 2020 with a population of 1.04 million people. This was after several years of a sort of flattening of the population over the last few years before that. Therefore, we are actually only about 6,000, had only an increase of about 6,000 in our population since the adoption of the general plan in 2011, and this is only a 6% increase. Some of the reasons for the decrease and flattening and decrease is the high cost of living in the area and an exacerbation of outmigration due to increased remote work due to the pandemic. Time will tell if this trend continues over the next couple of years, or if more people will return after work returns to either hybrid or fully in-person work. So one of the ways that we measure the growth is looking at the number of building permits that have been issued for different types of development. On this slide here, we're looking at new residential units, and this is based on building permits that have been issued. This is not just for the focused area, focused growth area, but for the whole city. We'll be looking at three different kinds of residential units. We have single-family, accessory dwelling units, and multifamily. And just a note, in years prior, they had combined the single-family and the ADUs, but we separated them out, and we'll explain a little more later. So we can look at multifamily units. We can see that there was 1,279 units that were permitted in the last fiscal year. This is in similar trends with the prior two fiscal years, but still below the average that was happening pre-pandemic times. Our single-family units, we only permitted 68 single-family homes, which is a significant decrease from any of the years since the adoption of the general plan. But on a bright note, we have seen an increase in ADU units that have been permitted. It increased year after year, to the point where, yeah, we have 540 units that were permitted this last fiscal year, and it is on trend to increase also in the following fiscal year. So staying consistent with the general plan policies, the focused growth inward, only 6% of the housing production has been single-family homes, 6.5% has been ADUs, and 87.55% has been multifamily units. So looking at, again, building permits issued, but this time for commercial and industrial space, we can see that for commercial space, we continue to have actually record numbers of square feet issued in 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021, even during the pandemic, but we saw a significant decrease in this prior fiscal year. And a similar trend for the industrial square footage as well, although the industrial square footage was more around average during the pandemic, but also a significant dip in the number of industrial square footage that was permitted in the prior fiscal year. And though not shown on this graph, it's to note that the alterations, so this is all for new construction, the alterations for commercial and industrial saw a significant increase in the amount of square footage, and this is very similar to the years in prior, or, I'm sorry, after the recession and years like 2011, 2012, where you see sort of a flipping of alterations and new construction. One of the reasons that this might be is because of the increased interest rates that have been increasing since March of 2022 and decreased demand for commercial space due to remote and hybrid work. So going more specifically to certain types of focused growth, we'll be looking at the urban village major strategy. So the urban village major strategy promotes the development of urban villages that are active, walkable, and transit-oriented mixed-use settings for new housing and job growth. In total, there are currently 60 urban villages. This is a change from last year because during the four-year review, they removed two urban villages and added one additional urban village. In total, the general plan identifies approximately 65,000 housing units and 116,000 jobs within these urban village areas. Before residential development can move forward in urban villages, there are only several ways that residential units can be built. They either have to have an adopted urban village plan and a residential land use designation, or in unapproved urban villages, they can have a residential designation, or they need to meet two different general plan policies, either policy IP 510, which is the signature projects policy, or IP 5.12 for 100% affordable housing within unplanned urban villages. So during the, since the adoption of the general plan in 2011, so far, there has been about 12,000 residential units that have been entitled and then 5.7 million square feet of commercial and industrial space. So overall, we have had 14 urban village plans that have been adopted by council, with North First Street being the most recent one adopted in March of 2022. There are currently five urban village plans that have started the urban village planning process, with four of them being actually updates to previously approved plans that were approved in 2013, and these are all around the future Alum Rock Bart Station area. And there is one additional urban village plan that is planned to start the planning process this summer. And then looking at the different policies that allow projects to move forward ahead of an approved urban village plan, so far, there has been one signature project that has completed, and this is the Sparta Student Housing on Santa Clara. And then this year, there were three additional signature project policies that were approved. For affordable housing, we had two additional projects that were approved in this prior fiscal year, and there are currently three that are under construction, and we have four more that are pending at this time. And then looking at another growth area, we will be looking at Destination Downtown, which is another major strategy. So the Destination Downtown major strategy supports continued growth of downtown as the city's cultural center and as an important employment and residential neighborhood. Consistent with this, the general plan plans for significant job and residential growth in the downtown. Since the adoption of the general plan in 2011, we, so far, about 9,000 residential units have been entitled and 18.8 million square feet of commercial and industrial has been entitled. A good majority of this is the Google project. So in the last fiscal year, though, we have seen only 259 residential units get planning permit approval, but we have also seen 5.5 million square feet of commercial and industrial square footage entitled in the last fiscal year. Our commercial vacancy, though, has risen from the prior fiscal year, but is still below the vacancy rate that we saw when the general plan was adopted in 2011. The last fiscal, the prior fiscal year in 2020, 2021, there were not very many public events because we were still going through COVID with lockdowns and events not happening, but in this last fiscal year of 2021, 22, we have seen a return to events in the downtown area, but these have not returned to the same levels that we had pre-pandemic. And lastly, though it's not a major strategy, we also look at housing. Housing plays an integral role in the general plan through the housing element and as a component of multiple major strategies. This graph shows the 120,000 planned units from the baseline of the general plan through 2040. To meet the goals of the general plan, it will require an uptick in housing production. We can see that we have had approximately 30,000 housing units that have been entitled. So this is an average of about 2,750 units per year since the adoption of the plan, but to make our goal of 120,000 housing units, we would need to average about 3,700 a year to meet our housing goals. So lastly, we'll look at the arena allocation. This is the regional housing needs allocation. This is handed down from the state and subsequently through the Association of Bay Area Governments, and then, sorry. The current arena cycle is from 2014 to 2023, and San Jose has currently been assigned to produce about 35,000 of the approximately 188,000 units assigned to the Bay Area region, and that equates to about 18.5% of the region's housing allocation. The housing allocation is broken down by affordability, and about 60% of the units are expected to be in the affordable category. We are in the final year of this current arena cycle, and for this cycle, we have built 21,898 units. Of that, 25% of it has been affordable housing units, and 75% has been market rate. So comparing to our market rate goal, we have exceeded our market rate goal with 115% of our goal, but we have only reached about 25% of our affordable housing goal.
So that concludes our presentation. And questions?
Thank you, Sinida and Laura. Michael, question?
Yeah, can you go back to the population side really quick? I just, I remember, I think in 2004 or '05, being in old City Hall, and my friend, who was a planner up in Sonoma County, said that San Jose was going to become the next Detroit. And I think she meant because we are a one-company town, like, much like Detroit is with automotive business and the economy was in the dot-com bus. What I said is, yeah, we are because we are now the 10th largest city in America, and we just surpassed Detroit. But I just want to note one thing, and that is, it is kind of unprecedented in our history that our population has dropped, what, three years in a row, and it leveled out for a couple of years before that. We've not ever seen this before. So, you know, I think, I don't know if this is a blip or this is a long-term trend, but I think as there was an editorial in the Mercury News the other day that probably California's glory years of growth are now over, and it's going to be, you know, much slower growth. I do want to notice, though, because getting back to the story about how we surpassed Detroit, and that is that Austin's population, I just Googled this, in 2021 was 964,177 people. So they're not far behind us, and their estimated population, this in 2022, is 1,126,151, which in one year is a growth of almost 162,000 people. So I think 2023 is going to be the year when San Jose goes from number 10 to number 11. I just thought that was really, really interesting. I didn't mean to be a downer, I'm sorry, but I just kind of had, like, wow, this is really quite a change.
Thank you, Michael. And at this time, if the commission has questions, there's a lot of topics here. You could probably go on for a long time. I might suggest we keep it to about 30 minutes and then move on to the rest of the agenda. But if any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Young, is that, I see you're trying to press a button to, go for it.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm a little nervous being here in person. Glad to have you all here and see you in person. So I wanted to start out by just complimenting the staff on this report. You know, I spent my career in local government, and I know how much work it is to do a report like this. Thank you. I know that a lot of times, when I was in government, I really wondered if anyone was going to read it. I did. I read the whole thing. It was very well done. It was very readable, excellent graphics, and really comprehensive. I have to say that I learned a lot about the city. I mean, I thought I was pretty in tune with what the city's doing, but I was just really impressed by how comprehensive the report was, talking about, you know, all different things that the city does and our programs and so forth. So, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One is on page 16, which was talking about a large decrease from 2021 to 2022 in commercial construction. And I just wondered if you could talk about that a little bit because, just what the reasons for that might be.
So I guess, yeah, these are still all speculation on this, I guess, but we're not, you know, we're not very, very sure, but, again, some of the possibilities is the increase in interest rates. And, you know, maybe the people being very tepid about building stuff because of the continuation of remote work and hybrid work, and so they, we've been seeing a decrease in demand for office space, and that's usually the biggest driver of the amount of square footage that we see in the commercial category. It also includes retail, but in general, the biggest chunk of that is our office space. And so because of the pandemic, still, we're still seeing less of a demand for the office space, and we can see that in the rise in the office vacancy as well. And so it'll be interesting to see next year if this is a continued trend or if it's just a blip in how things work. But it is interesting, I think, to see on the other end that even though new commercial or new construction is down, the alterations went up significantly from the prior year. And that's not actually in this report, but this is, if you look at the five-year development forecast that we, the general plan also puts out, it does talk about this a little bit and does have some more information on alterations as well. So though we're seeing a decrease in that side, we're seeing an increase in the alteration side. So we're still overall less than in some of the prior years, but it kind of helps balance that out a little bit, at least fiscally for the city and the amount of construction taxes that we are able to collect from these building permits.
Great, thank you. And kind of along those lines, I'm just wondering if there's been any update on, I know that Google stated they're slowing down their construction plans for the Deirdre Don Station area. I just wonder if city staff has had any update from Google on that?
Yeah, so, I mean, from what I'm hearing, I mean, I'm not in the hot-off-the-press meeting, but I don't, my understanding is we really don't have much more than they're just kind of, what I've heard is putting it on pause, reevaluating their real estate holdings they currently have, and kind of looking at what they think they're going to need in a world where they are cutting staff, but also sort of, you know, what does the future of work and hybrid work look like? So they have made a commitment. They do still intend to move forward in San Jose, but the timeline right now but the timeline right now is a little bit unclear.
Okay, great. Thank you. There was something I thought was really interesting, but I didn't understand what it was, and it was called the Zero Emissions Neighborhood in the Santee area. I wonder if someone could explain a little bit what, exactly what that program is?
Let me see if we can get Wilson. Is Wilson Tam online?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Wilson.
Yes, I'll try my best to answer this question. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, Chair, Commissioners and the public. My name is Wilson Tam from the Department of Transportation. So the Zero Emission Neighborhood is an initiative coming out of the Climate Smart San Jose Plan and as part of the American Cities Climate Challenge that the city has just completed last year. One of the things that we have done as a city is to designate a neighborhood for a zero emission neighborhood destination. And the goal here is to work with a community in a low-income community of concern areas to work with the residents about mobility solutions. Is there a way to invest in innovative solutions for transportation in order to promote health, air quality, and better transportation? And so we, and I'm kind of speaking on behalf of ESD at this point because they are the lead for this ZAN neighborhood initiative, and our role and duty is to work on one element of the ZAN neighborhood, and that is the urban freight solution. So, yeah, so this is, you know, ESD, last year worked with a couple of potential neighborhood candidates. And after talking with these neighborhoods, you know, we decided that the ZAN neighborhood in District 7 is a prime candidate for implementing a zero emission neighborhood with strong support from the community. So we are in the process of collecting funds to actually implement a potential solution, one of which, which I'm a part of is the, the urban freight delivering, a delivery hub. So we are, you know, we have already gotten a fund from, from, from a state agency to provide, to work with actually a, 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 you know, delivery operators to designate an area in the neighborhood for providing that kind of a last-mile delivery solution. And that could include a delivery hub in which the residents can use mobility or solutions such as like cargo bikes or other things to go to that hub and pick up their goods. And so this is kind of like one of the many initiatives in Santee that we are trying to implement. And ESD will be able to speak more on what are the other initiatives that they are thinking about implementing besides urban freight, last mile delivery.
So, thank you. So I'm just unclear, how does the freight hub tie in with lowering emissions?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, 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 you know, urban freight is, so, so, long story short, you know, one of the key, you know, you know, greenhouse gas emissions contrib- contributors are heavy vehicles trying to access, you know, you know, each property delivering goods. And, and, you know, urban freight delivering hub is a concept about, is there a way to find a hub so that all the heavy vehicles can drop off their goods at one location as opposed to going from door to door? And that residents can use, or maybe there's a third-party operators that can use a low-emission vehicle such as like a cargo e-bikes or something like that to deliver their goods for the last mile distance between the hub and the residence. And so this model has been implemented in some cities such as the city of Seattle. They were able to work with one of the neighborhoods in Seattle to, for this, what they call the Urban Freight Delivering Hub. And they're able to find in underutilized parking lots in a, in a neighborhood and work with a partner, operators such as like e-cargo bikes and also, I think it's FedEx or UPS to work with the residents about how to make this last mile delivery a lot more environmentally sustainable and friendly. And they were also able to activate that delivery hub by bringing in things such as like street vendors, open space program to really activating, to activate the space so that picking up the goods may not be the only reason why people will go to the hub. So they're able to enjoy public life and spend a good afternoon there besides just picking up their, their goods. So this is a model that we're trying to explore with the Santee neighborhood. We are not there yet. We are still working with the residents to, to, to define or design the scope of this program. And, yeah, so once we are, we are able, we are able to find the best location and the scope for this, then we are going to continue to seek funding to actually implement the pilot at this point. So we are, yeah, so again, like, this is just one of the many initiatives about the zero emission neighborhood that we are trying to work with the Santee neighborhood. And I hope I'm able to speak more about the other elements of the ZAN neighborhood that ESD is doing right now. But for now, I'm able to speak more about the urban freight delivering.
Thank you. Just briefly, the reason I ask this is this commission is going to be seeing some very large warehousing projects come, come, coming before us based on the ERs I've seen. And so we're talking about consignment warehouses such as Amazon. And there's been a lot of concern in Southern California about the diesel emissions around those facilities from the trucks idling. And I've, I've had just some informal communication with a couple of the planners on this. I'm very interested in looking at whether we can, as a commission, work with the planning staff to see if we can create a condition of approval that would reduce the amount of diesel emissions from these warehouses. So just a future item that, that I'm interested in. And Chair, I'm not sure how to bring that forward, but we can discuss that offline if you want. Have a question, I guess, Michael, for you. How long, in general, does it take a commercial project to go from application to permitting? Let's say it's not, it doesn't involve a zoning change or anything like that. It's just a, a commercial project that's going in on a vacant piece of land?
Do you mean from application to construction?
I'm sorry, application to granting of permit, granting of the building permit?
Well, actually, I would, I would defer to some of my colleagues in, in the development side of the office, but I think if, if you don't need to do rezoning and it's just a straight site permit and you don't, and the CEQA is, is, you know, you don't have to do an EIR, I would, you know, think probably you, you could do it as quickly as probably six months.
Okay, great.
Does that sound reasonable to my colleagues in development review? I mean, it can take often and can take longer than that, but, I mean, there are cases where it's just a site permit?
Yes, an average of eight months, depending on the CEQA documents prepared.
Okay, great. The reason I ask is I actually read the mayor's March budget message today. Thank you. There is a link in, in your report for that. And, you know, one of the things you talked about was a backlog in, in, in planning committee and largely due to staffing issues. And I just wanted to point out something in his report that I found a little interesting, and that is that if you read, if you read the mayor's message, which I would encourage all my colleagues to do, he talks about how the city has increased compensation for the police department to ensure that salaries are competitive, which I think is completely correct. I'm a very big supporter of public safety. That's the area I came from. But I think the same things needed in, in planning and community development. And so I just wanted to, again, note his message, which was that, this is on page 23, says, "Managers within PBCE drive progress on our most pressing and demanding planning and permitting objectives. However, we've seen high turnover in these classifications due to competition from neighboring cities who can offer higher pay for lighter workloads. To address staffing shortages that result in unnecessarily slow approval processes, the city manager is directed to explore creative ideas for new methods that enable the city to better recruit and retain mid-level planners and supervisors." Well, personally, I don't know what that means. It doesn't really say anything. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're listening, I think there's a way to help our planning staff, which is increase their compensation. Do a salary survey, just like we did with the police department, see what planners are paid in the Bay Area and, you know, make sure our planners are paid appropriately. I know that's easy to say. You know, we have limited resources, but if we want to get projects through the pipeline, which we do, affordable housing, other things, we, you folks need to have a staff to do that. So, okay, off my soapbox, I'm going to say one more thing, which is I'm really proud of our city. Reading this report, you know, I, I know our city has its issues, but I'm really proud of the city, of all the, the hard work the staff is doing, our residents. They're really committed. And if you read that, if you read this report, the general plan review, we're doing a lot of really neat things as a city, and I'm very proud to be a resident. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Cantrell?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation, actually. I think it was, it was amazing. And I really respect and appreciate the volume and level of work that has to be done. Thank you very much for taking the time and, and presenting that to us. I'm curious, though, we, we talk a lot about applying an equity lens to what we do and our approaches. I'm curious about the demographics of the people who are leaving the city. I know myself that I've been tracking an up and down decline in African-American residents. What I find interesting is the cross-section of when we do unhoused counts, black population tends to tick up a little bit, which indicates to me that maybe we're not actually leaving, that maybe we're just going to the streets. So I'm curious how much of that data you're collecting and how that impacts planning and decisions that you're making.
Yeah, I'm actually really interested in that myself. And I, I don't know, we don't have that data, and I think there's a, I think there's, I don't know to what extent it is being collected, but that's a really good question, and we should, we should dig into that one. Yeah, I, because they don't really have an exit survey of people leaving, as far as I know. I mean, there are ways they can measure different registrations of when people change search licenses and whatnot, I believe, but I don't, I don't know that that data is available. But we'll look into it because I actually really interested in the answer to that myself, and I think we, the team is as well. That's a really good question.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I see no other names on the, there we go. Commissioner Barocchio?
I'm new to this button. Good evening, everyone. Similar to what my colleagues have said, thank you for this great report. Has a lot of data, a lot of visuals. I'm currently looking at page 51 of the, of the overall report, Major Strategy Number 10. And I'm curious about what's, what's been observed in the middle paragraph. It says, "Recreational lands and city regional parklands are expected to decrease marginally compared to the actual service level as of June 2022 due to an anticipated increase in population." Would you be able to share a little bit more about, about that? And then I have a follow-up.
So we do not, do not have anybody from the Parks Department with us, but our understanding is that there is a clarification needed for that sentence. As you have seen in the other graph, the population is currently decreasing, not necessarily increasing. But the idea is that the finite amount of land that is there for parks and the, and, and so in the current years, the fundings are going more towards improving the existing parks. But it is not necessarily related to the increase, anticipated increase in population in the short term. But in the long term, there is an anticipated increase in population. So if that is the question, then that's, that's where there's a little discrepancy with our previous data.
So Sunita, the idea is that it's not that the parks are shrinking, it's that the regional parks are, as a ratio of park acreage to population, would, is projected to decrease because the population is projected to increase again? Is that what they're saying? Just to be clear, it's not an absolute loss of parkland. It's more of a, the service standard, right? In terms of how many acres of, of regional or community-serving or neighborhood-serving parks there are per, per thousand people of population, I believe it is.
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that. I think that's, that's, I think, what they're saying, but there's a little bit of a disconnect because what we're showing in our other section is the population is going down. If the population is going down, then the service, the, the service level in terms of acreage to population shouldn't be getting worse. It should actually be improving or at least staying flat.
It is. And like Sunita kind of already mentioned, is that though we have seen a decrease in population over the long term, we still anticipate like a, a return to that. So over the long term, there might be with the population increase. That's sort of what they're trying to say, I think. But, yeah, it's from parks. They helped us with this part, so.
Curious. Actually, is it possible that some of the lands public, that were currently or recently being used for parks are no longer accessible due to things like flooding and, you know, changes in land use or anything like that?
No, I don't think so because they're, they're looking at, you know, they're not looking at short-term effects of, you know, disasters or they're looking at just how much regional parkland or community parkland do, do we have? And if it's out of service for a couple of months, they wouldn't, I don't think they would factor that in.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that response and thank you for, for weighing in. My last, I guess, overall comment, I think every four years this is done. Every four years. For the next round, I think what would be very beneficial for the, for the Planning Commission and, and for City Council is to see some of this data broken down by district. I think, I think seeing the park sites at 210 and the park acreage at, at 3,600, it'll be good to see the ratio and the distribution across, across the city. That's my only recommendation. Overall, it looks very solid. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barocchio. And I believe that is in the city's green print. And, but if that needs to be tied in, then that's good feedback, right? So Commissioner Arnellis Wise?
Great job, girl. Thank you. One of the questions that I had was that you mentioned that two urban villages were removed. Which ones were they and why?
So as part of the four-year review, there was the Evergreen Urban Village was removed, and the other one was the Foxtail, I forget the cross-street, but it was, it's like south of Story Road.
It's on Capitol. It's actually the Foxtail, I think, Apartments. And so the whole village was one apartment, large 1960s apartment project. And I think one or two vacant lots, and one of them had been developed with a little commercial building in the last few years. So, so we removed it because there was only one little parcel left, and we didn't want to go through an exercise of planning a village to, to knock down an older apartment that was probably naturally affordable that might displace people.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And they added the Capital Caltrain Station area as the, which is also considered an urban village.
Okay, good. I'm just wondering, how is the general plan capturing, you know, since COVID, some of the restaurants have gone outside and so maybe, you know, increase some of that commercial space into, or even like we were talking about parks, reclaiming some public space by, you know, taking over some streets and converting that into more, you know, parkland and whatnot. I guess it would be nice to see a lot of that, that public space or streets be reclaimed and be used for people. and be used for people and, and be captured somehow.
I think that can be done, I think we can try and find the amount of outdoor space that is for restaurants and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of being done. It's not formal city-owned parkland, but it's sort of in, like informal third spaces that are happening. And with the El Fresco program that came about during COVID, and it's been extended, we continue to see, you know, restaurants, you know, putting tables out on the sidewalk and the parking lot, and it's actually a great thing, right? So we're hopeful that that, that will continue. And then there's things like Viva Caia, which don't convert the streets for good, seven days a week, but it does convert a lot of streets, you know, one or two times a year that kind of open them up for, for businesses and people to have fun and ride bikes and rollerblade and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, that comes to mind is San Pedro's right here, you know, that, that would be really nice to really take those streets back, I think that would be nice. That's all the questions I have, thanks.
Anyone else? Hey, we beat the timer, we still have three and a half minutes left, so that's exciting. What, I know we need to make a motion to accept the report, but may I suggest to whoever makes the motion incorporate the comments from Commissioner Young on planning department compensation, that it include Commissioner Young's comment, you like that one, include commissioners' comments on a concern about diesel emissions in distribution sites, that it include questions from Commissioner Cantrell regarding outbound migration by ethnicity or race, and that it also include Commissioner Barocchio's comment on clarity on the park ratio question. So that would be my suggestion, whoever makes the motion.
Commissioners, may I just add one little thing before you go to the vote? So we did get a response from the Parks Department, and I just wanted to read this out to you. And the way this sentence is supposed to read is that the 2022-2023 level of service-
Can you talk closer to the mic?
Level of service estimate for neighborhood and community recreational lands and regional citywide parklands are expected to decrease marginally compared to the actual service levels as of June 2022, due to the need to prioritize improving existing infrastructure and increasing costs associated with buying and developing land for park purposes. So hopefully that provides slightly more clarity over this, but the rest, we can still follow up with you.
It's projected to go down because the population is projected to increase slightly, and they're not investing in expanding these facilities, but reinvesting in existing facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that. It really does show to Commissioner Young's point that you're a sharp team and definitely collaborative, so I appreciate that.
Excellent. So we need a motion.
I move, over the mic, is that how, how it works?
Yeah, you could just speak it out.
Technology, okay, yes, I motion to approve the, the plan before us.
And is there a second? And, and for the maker of the motion, does that incorporate the feedback from some of the commissioners?
Yes, with, with incorporating what the chair has mentioned and outlined from our comments.
Okay, and is that okay if a seconder?
Yes.
Great. Any comments or questions on the motion?
I actually called in yesterday to the mayor's budget meeting to say, with a similar remark about how we need to get shovels on the ground faster and improve the planning department, so.
Great. So then, oh, any members of the public here to speak on that? Anyone online that's raised their hand to speak on this item? And who's that voice that's going to answer that question?
We do not have any hands raised.
Great, so then we'll move on, and we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ornellus Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And now we'll be moving on to the general plan consent calendars. These items are considered to be routine and typically adopted in one motion. I would ask the staff, are there any hands raised on these items, or any one that wants to speak on this item from the public?
We do have one hand raised.
You do have one hand raised?
Yes.
And who is that, what item is that for?
Me and you, real quick. Hi Ned, could you let us know what item this is for? Ned, you are unmuted, if you could unmute your device.
Sorry about that. After all these years, I still get the unmute wrong. This is for item A on the general plan consent calendar, it's a general plan amendment, rezoning, and environmental report.
Okay, great. So we know we have someone from the public that wants to speak on item A, and I see there's Commissioner Lardinois, but we have items B and C, and I'll go to Commissioner Lardinois for comment.
Thank you. I just had a general question about this, it's not specific to an item, should I ask it now or wait?
It says, not regarding this consent calendar?
It's regarding the consent calendar, but it's not specific to an item.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just a couple of months ago, we had a policy come before us that would require privately initiated general plan amendments to be accompanied by a development permit. I just wanted to check in on the status of that and if it applies to this particular agenda.
Okay, Michael, or?
Sure. This does not apply to this agenda, this applies to the general plan applications that would be submitted from after this, after the 2023 cycle, so not even those which were submitted this year would be subject to that policy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, so we have that clarity. So I guess I'm looking at items B and C. Is there any questions, or does anyone want to make a motion on that to approve those two items?
So moved.
That's a so moved from Commissioner Lardinois, is there a second?
I'll second.
Cantrell, you're feeling good. Commissioner Cantrell is the second, very confident. We have items B and C, we have no members of the public to speak on that item here or online, and do the commissioners have any comments on that? I don't see any, so we will move forward with a vote? Yes, I hear a voice.
Sorry, Chair, that's Commissioner Young. I, I just have a really brief question on the Julian Project, page 10 of the staff report.
So then, did you want to pull that item from the motion?
Not necessarily, if I can just get a clarification.
So the attorney, is it okay to get a clarification on one item of multiple?
Yes.
Outstanding. Commissioner Young?
Yes, so, page 10 on the Julian Project, it was, there was just this really complex explanation that I couldn't quite make heads or tails of, could, and I'm not sure if my colleagues looked at it or not, but could you just kind of explain that?
Yeah, we're just trying to pull up the report real quick.
Is it possible to put that on the, on the screen? Page 10?
Can you do that? Can you do that? Oh, okay, I can do that one? It's 2008.
What page did you say?
10.
I believe it was page 10. I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me.
So is this in relation to the height requirement or part of the conformance?
So, I don't know, is it possible to bring, okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, okay, so it's the policy LU 2.6. I was trying to follow my way through that, has to do with, I think, the floor area ratio?
Yeah, so the policy land use 2.6 in the Alameda Urban Village Plan states that new development shall include new commercial space at or greater than the existing commercial space. So the existing commercial space on site is 2,880 square feet. The commercial FAR requirement is .5 for the MUC and for the proposed transit residential land use designation, because it also includes a .5 commercial FAR. So for the site, that is .48 acre, .48 acres with a .5 FAR would require, I think it's like 10,000 square feet. So any development, whether it has the current MUC land use designation or the proposed transit residential land use designation, would automatically require more commercial space than what is currently already there. So we don't have to worry about if it will, if it won't, it would have to, because the minimum commercial FAR would require more than that. So it would, so therefore it would be consistent with that policy, that we, we are ensuring that we are getting more commercial space out of that, that site.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? Nope. All right, we'll vote on this motion to approve items B and C. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Ornellus Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, that's a yes. And now we will move on to item A, which I believe we have a public speaker, so take that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sanita Ghoshal, I am the project manager for the general plan amendment, general plan text amendment and rezoning, file numbers GP 22-001 and C 22-014. This is a privately initiated general plan amendment to modify the envisioned San Jose 2040 land use transportation diagram designation from public quasi-public to heavy industrial and a rezoning to, sorry, from R 18 single-family residential zoning district to HI heavy industrial zoning district on a 3.62 Rosaceco site. The site is located on the west side of Interstate 680 and east side of Pecton Court. The site is currently vacant. The surrounding area on both sides of Pecton Court comprised of industrial uses, including machining and tooling businesses, mechanical engineering firm, electrical supply company, roofing business, construction firm, et cetera. All of these uses are located in the city of Milpitas. The project is consistent with all relevant policies in the general plan as analyzed in the staff report. An initial study negative declaration was prepared for the project. The initial study negative declaration concludes that the project would not result in any significant impacts. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission finds that the project is in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act and recommend approval of the general plan amendment, general plan text, and, and rezoning to the city council. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Sanita, and I know there's a member of the public that wants to comment, so maybe we can see what they want to share, and then we can see what, if any of the staff ask, answer the question. Hi, voice in the background, who's the person that's, you know, managing the meeting? Danielle, great. Danielle, is that person still here to raise their hand on item A?
Yes.
Great.
Sorry, I've tried to get the comment timer up here. Okay, Ned, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair members of the Planning Commission, my name is Ned Thomas, and I serve as Planning Director for the city of Milpitas. As noted in the staff report for this item, the overall development in sight includes a larger 3.62 acre site in San Jose and a separate smaller parcel of less than an acre, which is wholly located in the city of Milpitas. The smaller parcel provides the only viable public access to the larger site via Pecton Court, which is a cul-de-sac, again, wholly located in the city of Milpitas. The subject site was once part of a much larger property that was bifurcated by the construction of I 680. The alignment of the freeway left the subject parcel as a remnant entirely cut off from the rest of San Jose. Future development of the site will only occur if the city of San Jose and the city of Milpitas can negotiate a mutually beneficial agreement in accordance with city, with the San Jose City Council Policy 6-15 pertaining to boundary adjustments in urbanized areas. The interests of both cities will best be served through these types of good faith negotiations consistent with this policy, because at present, the subject site is not located in an area where existing infrastructure like sewer, water, transportation facilities, or public services, police, fire, libraries, and parks are readily available from the city of San Jose. The initial study negative declaration prepared for this project under SEQA acknowledges these facts and notes that the only viable way for the city of San Jose to provide these public services to the subject site is through collaboration with the city of Milpitas. I submitted a comment letter on the proposed amendment and rezoning to the Chair. I did not see a copy of the letter in the staff report, and respectfully request that my letter be added to the record for this meeting. We also request that your recommendation to the city council on the rezoning and plan amendment note that there's limited access to public utilities and emergency services, and that these issues have not been adequately analyzed in the SEQA document. We also request that your recommendation that directs, asks, or recommends-
Thank you.
-the city council direct staff to engage in discussions-
Thank you.
-with the city of Milpitas. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments based on the comment made? I know that we did receive the letter, and, but I know you also kind of shared it a little bit, I'm sure you might want to just provide more context. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, so, yeah, we've been talking to Ned in Milpitas for a while on this, and they definitely, they, I think what we've heard from members, they want the property to be annexed into Milpitas ideally. We went through a number of conversations about that, looking at land swaps, were not able to come to a solution. We could, I think there was, you know, we could have kept going and seeing what, how it might work. The applicant and property owner of the land, though, however, wants to be in the city of San Jose, and, and we support that, so they're working on ways to get storm water and sewer to the site. It's looking, it's looking positive that they will be able to do that. And so, so given the situation that, you know, we're always trying to increase our employment land in San Jose, and in particular, the applicant wants to be in San Jose, we haven't been talking to Milpitas further about some kind of land swap or some, or some arrangement with the city whereby, some other type of arrangement with Milpitas on this piece of property.
Sumita?
This is Anita Ghoshal, planning planner. I just want to respond to the letter, the question that Ned brought up about the letter. My understanding is that a comment letter was submitted for, during the public circulation of the initial study negative declaration, and comments to that letter, along with the letter, is posted in the environmental library of the city's website, but it was not attached to the staff report, because it was part of the SEQA review, and I'd let our SEQA planners respond to anything related to that, if they want to add anything.
Hi, Cassandra Vanderzweep, environmental supervising planner. I just wanted to clarify, the letter actually was submitted after the circulation of the SEQA document, but due to the proximity of when we received it, we did include it in the response to comments, which was posted on the city's website last week, March 15th.
Thank you. And then, and then Commissioner Lardinois?
Yeah, so I definitely don't understand all the complexities of the, I don't know if dispute is even the right word here, but Michael, just to put it in simple terms, you know, the speaker was talking about good faith negotiation between the cities. In your opinion, has, has that happened or is happening? It's just that an agreement wasn't come to?
Yeah, so we were, we were having, going back and forth on different ideas and solutions, we, we didn't come to sort of a resolution on that, and then, and then the property owner said that they actually wanted to remain in, in San Jose, so, so we didn't progress further on, on future, you know, discussions with the city of Milpitas. Had the, the property owner been open to and interested in potentially going to Milpitas, we would have continued those conversations.
Okay, yeah, I think that answers my question, thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Is there a motion on this item? Oh, Commissioner Ornellus Wise?
You know, that just brings up a couple of questions for me. So I'm assuming that the parcel is within the urban service area of the city of San Jose, am I correct? Okay.
Correct.
And it looked like it wasn't landlocked, I mean, there was a road right in front of it, correct?
Yeah, there was a way to get in, the issue is that the road into the property is in the city of Milpitas.
Oh, I see.
So there's no direct access from the city of San Jose. I mean, if we could put up a map, you could probably see it pretty clearly, but yeah, it's a little island of San Jose, it's bordered by 680 on the east side, Milpitas on the north and the west side, and a valley water, channelized creek- water, channelized creek on the south side. And San Jose on the south side, too. There's just a creek between the development in San Jose and the property.
Okay, that makes sense. One of the concerns or just questions I had was, you know, the residence, it looks like to the rear, I don't know exactly the direction here. I know that there seems to be some grass area. I didn't know what the setback was in the distance from the residential to the proposed heavy industrial.
I don't think there's a project. Is that correct? So we don't have a setback?
Well, no, I mean, you could, I don't know if you guys know the setback from the property itself to the adjacent residential, but we don't have a project. That's correct.
I'm trying to look up the SEQA document to see if there is more details in there.
And suffice it to say, whatever would come forward would then produce a setback that would then have its own approval.
That is true.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't say what was the intent of the proposed use, you know? You know, I was just, I don't know, it seems like obviously they're proposing, you know, this because they have an intent to do something. Do they know what that intent is now?
It is not known to us. The current proposal is only for the general plan amendment and the rezoning is state requirement, so they are rezoning to a conforming rezoning district.
I could quickly chime in that heavy industrial HI zoning district has a required 25-foot setback from a residential district for buildings, 25 feet, also for the parking and circulation from a residential district, 100 feet for loading docks from a residential zoning district, and a maximum height of 50. So assuming the project would comply with the zoning district, which is typical, it should at least have a minimum of 25 feet.
Okay. Michael, I just have a question in regards to when someone, I mean, this is just a very unique circumstance where it's kind of landlocked in regards to our city limits, but then it abuts the city of Milpitas. When then they propose something and they go on to a city street that no longer is under our jurisdiction but under a different, how is that typically mitigated or handled?
How's those checkpoints in Campbell and Los Gatos and Milpitas that we have?
I think, I mean, I believe that's one of the things that, correct me if I'm wrong, that Ned's bringing up. I don't know how the service issue related to police and fire are dealt with and the agreements on that. I'm a little unclear on how that's resolved at this point. Yeah, but I mean, the issue is like, for example, you can get there from San Jose, but it's not like, it's a little, you have to, you know, there's a little bit of a circuitous route, so that may, I don't have an answer to that.
Okay.
But that's not my area of expertise.
I just wanted to add that we just did a quick Google distance measure and it's, it's 90 feet from the rear lot lines of the residential units to the rear lot line of the industrial site.
But right now, we're not looking at a project. It's just, okay. All right, thanks for the clarification.
Any other comments? Just looking at the map, though, you know, you have 680 freeway, you have a freeway interchange as, those are both neighbors of the property and an industrial side, so it seems very appropriate for the use. So is there a motion on this item? Or would someone be kind enough to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Young with the motion. We're looking for a second, someone that would second Commissioner Young's motion.
I'll second the motion.
Outstanding. Commissioner Rosario with the second. Any comments on this? No, we'll do the roll. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnellus Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And so that item carries. And now we'll go on to the public hearing, which we will take up item GP 19010, PDC 20-023, general plan amendment to amend the general plan designation combined industrial commercial. And that would go to staff.
Evening Commissioners. Alec Atienza, planning project manager on the development review team. Let me share my screen quick. All right, there we go. I'm joined by my colleague Myra Blanco and the environmental planning team. Item before you is the Granite Rock capital site modernization project. As the chair stated, this is a general plan amendment, a plan, excuse me, a planned development rezoning and a planned development permit, so three actions are taken. So this site is located 120 Granite Rock Way in Council District 7. So the general plan amendment would amend the existing general plan land use designation from CIC, combined industrial commercial, to heavy industrial. The applicant has also applied for a planned development zoning, so the site is currently located in two zoning districts. It's split. It's in the IP zoning district as well as an IPPD planned development zoning district. They would be rezoning the site to a new heavy industrial planned development zoning district. And then the third action here is a planned development permit, and that would allow the demolition of four existing buildings totaling about 15,000 square feet, as well as the removal of 30 trees and the expansion and modernization of the existing Granite Rock facility. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about what that entails. So a lot of words on the screen, but I'm just going to run through it briefly. So that planned development permit will allow the lengthening of the existing onsite rail infrastructure, the continuation of the existing concrete and aggregate recycling use, the installation of a new concrete truck washout and reclaiming system, installation of a truck wash system to abate truck traffic dusting, vehicle and truck parking to accommodate site operations, relocation of an existing maintenance shop, and the construction of a new equipment storage facility, as well as the construction of a new rail car offloading system, nine 120-foot-high aggregate silos, a new concrete facility, a semiticious rail car unloading, storage, and distribution facility, a new asphalt facility, a new warehouse and storage facility, as well as a new quality assurance office space. So just to give a little context of what we're doing here again, so right now, the site is combined industrial commercial. And again, that would go to the heavy industrial general plan land use designation. The site currently operates as a heavy industrial use, so this would be in line with what is currently existing as well as what is proposed. With regards to the planning, as you can see on the map here, it's actually, again, it's split zoned. So right now, it has an IP zoning district and IPPD zoning district. That planned development zoning district was what was originally zoned, what the site was originally zoned to when it was annexed to the city in 1976. So this proposed zoning district would rezone the entire site into one new planned development zoning district. Oops, excuse me. One, too fast. So the project was reviewed for conformance with the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan, specifically with regards to maintaining and expanding industrial facilities as well as recycling facilities. It was also reviewed for conformance with the municipal code. This project is consistent with all applicable zoning requirements of the existing and proposed heavy industrial planned development zoning district. Specifically for this site, where it deviates from the heavy industrial zoning district is the height of the aggregate silos as well as the front setback for the office building. So the height of the aggregate silos as well as the concrete facility would go above what is typically allowed. However, this was already existing as part of the original planned development zoning district, so it's about maximum height of 175 feet allowed, 168 feet is what is proposed. And then the front setback for the office building is 12 feet, whereas normally, it would be about 15 feet for the heavy industrial zoning district. And then we did do some public outreach. So city council policy 6-30 required a community meeting for the project. We held one in January of 2021. This was a joint EIR scoping and community meeting. And then lastly, I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Myra Blanco to discuss the environmental review of the project.
Thanks, Alec. Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the public. Myra Blanco, environmental project manager with planning, building, and code enforcement. And I will also be giving a verbal presentation. The city as the lead agency for the project prepared an environmental impact report in compliance with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, and the SEQA statute and guidelines. When an EIR is the anticipated SEQA document, the first step in its preparation is the publication of a notice of preparation, also known as an NOP. The NOP for the project was publicly circulated for over 30 days from January 14, 2021 to February 15, 2021, and extended to February 23, 2021. The NOP provided a general description of the proposed project and identified possible environmental impacts that could result from implementation of the project. During the circulation of the NOP, city staff also held, as Alec mentioned, a virtual joint scoping community meeting to discuss the project, the contents of the NOP, and solicit public input regarding the project's environmental review. Comments received during the NOP circulation period were considered in the preparation of the EIR. Once the draft EIR was completed, a notice of completion and a notice of availability were filed electronically with the state's Office of Planning and Research on September 20th, 2022, which started a 45-day public circulation period. The notice of availability of the draft EIR was also published on the city's environmental review documents website, and the link was emailed to all interested parties and NOP commenters. The NOA was further publicized by filing it with the county recorder's office, the San Jose Post Record, the Mercury News, and the city's news and stories page, which is above and beyond the SEQA requirements for notification. The EIR provides analysis for the discretionary approvals associated with the project, including the general plan amendment, the planned development rezoning, and planned development permit. The EIR analyzed the Granite Rock modernization and expansion project, including proposed changes in operations at the existing recycling, manufacturing, and distribution facility for aggregate, asphalt, concrete, and other construction materials, the addition of an asphalt plant and semiticious distribution facility, the addition of a one-story, 10,000-square-foot materials warehouse and storage facility, a new 5,500-square-foot quality assurance quality control facility with office space, removal of an existing equipment, storage, and maintenance yard, rail spur extensions to accommodate approximately 55 rail cars, tree removal, all within the proposed 24-hour-per-day, seven-days-per-week context. The EIR identified significant impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and hazardous materials. These impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels with the implementation of identified mitigations. The impacts and mitigation measures are outlined in the associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program and is also part of the hearing documents. The EIR did not identify any significant and unavoidable impacts, and therefore, a statement of overriding considerations would not be required for this project. So during the 45-day public review and comment period, staff received 11 comments on the draft EIR, four from regional and local agencies, and seven from members of the public organizations and businesses. These comments primarily had questions, and are comments dealing with transportation, hazardous and hazardous materials, project description, and tribal cultural resources. Staff prepared responses to these comments in a First Amendment responses to comments document, which was posted to the city's environmental review documents website on March 14, 2023. All commenters were also sent notice of the First Amendment's availability via email. So following the publication of the First Amendment, staff issued an errata memo which addresses a comment staff received on March 6, 2022 regarding the environmental impacts to a residential unit at the SNL Mini Storage, which is a self-storage facility located adjacent to the project site. Stated in the memo, the presence of a residence at the SNL Mini Storage facility was not known at the time the draft EIR was prepared. City staff worked with the environmental consultant to determine if any new significant impacts would occur given the site's proximity to the project site. A supplemental air quality analysis prepared by Illingworth and Rodkin determined that based on the modeling results, the concentrations at the self-storage receptor would be substantially lower than those at the project's maximally exposed individual already identified in the draft EIR due to the central location of the proposed project construction and operation, and therefore, the analysis of impacts in the draft EIR do not require revisions, and the impacts identified remain unchanged. The errata memo also outlines minor revisions and edits to the First Amendment concerning the long-range transportation analysis and replaces appendix G with the 2022 general plan amendment transportation analysis. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Myra. I'll just do my last slide, sorry. So staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to city council the adoption of the EIR, as well as the approval of the general plan amendment, the rezoning, and the planned development permit. And with that, we have Eric Shaneauer, the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Myra. Mr. Shaneauer, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Chair Olivero, members of the commission. My name is Eric Shaneauer, and I represent Granite Rock on this application. I'm joined tonight by Pat Mapelli, who's with Granite Rock, if you want to hear directly from the owner and operator. First of all, we want to thank staff for all of their hard work to bring this project forward, the planning staff, SEQA staff, public works. When you have to analyze an existing and proposed industrial facility, it's fairly unique, so it takes extra focus and extra effort to analyze it properly for conformance with city policy. So we appreciate all of their efforts. On the screen is an aerial photograph of the existing property, and there's three key things to note. Number one, on the top of the page, the property is linked to the main rail freight line that enters the Bay Area from the south. It's parallel to Monterey Highway. This site was created in 1822 because of the rail line, and it's a critical component for the operation of this facility. Second, as you can see, there are no sensitive uses nearby the site. It is fully surrounded by industrial properties, streets, and parking lots. And lastly, on the site, you can see it's not paved. Most of the site is not paved, and we're going to change that with this project. So this site has a long history of being a rail-served industrial site. For 141 years, it has provided construction materials to the Bay Area. In 1882, it became the San Jose Brick Company. The facility was strategically located on the rail line, as I mentioned, so they could ship bricks all over the Bay Area, which was a primary construction material back in the 1800s and early 1900s. Granite Rock purchased the site in 1971, and for 52 years, Granite Rock has provided aggregate, concrete, and asphalt as primary construction materials to projects in San Jose and all over the Bay Area. And once again, the connection to the rail line is absolutely critical for the operation of this facility. This is a major construction material facility for the Bay Area, and it provides key construction materials to major projects throughout Silicon Valley, including the Berias Abart Station, Manetta-San Jose International Airport, the new San Jose State University Interdisciplinary Science Building, the Capital Expressway VTA Rail Extension, Levi Stadium, the just recently opened Laurel Curve Wildlife Undercrossing under Highway 87, the new school campuses being built in North San Jose by Santa Clara Unified School District, and the VTA BRT station right outside here of city hall. Granite Rock's materials and Granite Rock's construction crews provided to those key projects. This is the proposed site plan, and it lays out with some key components. In the hatched area is the, is the materials recycling area where demolished construction materials come in and get recycled and reused. And then there's areas for concrete production, asphalt production, and of course, the rail spur line that comes onto the property. The key benefit to the community, besides creating more construction materials that we all need, is environmentally beneficial improvements to the property. So we will be shipping much more materials by rail, taking hundreds of diesel trucks off the street that are heavy and create wear and tear on the highway and the off the street that are heavy and create wear and tear on the highway and the road and create traffic. Most of the materials that will come in will be offloaded and transferred in fully enclosed conveyor belt systems instead of open piles with tractors that creates dust and noise. Most of the materials will be stored in enclosed silos now instead of open piles. Air handling systems will abate dust in these enclosed areas to help reduce dust in the air. The entire site will now be paved, as I showed you in the aerial. Most of the site is currently not paved. Modern concrete truck washout and reclaim systems will be built so that you can wash out concrete trucks that actually reclaim those materials or reuse them instead of them being washed into the ground or into the storm drain system. Truck washing systems will prevent dust from getting on the street. Best management practices for stormwater will be implemented, meeting today's standards, and the facility will increase the recycling and reuse of demolished construction materials within this facility. This shows you just some pictures of what the new building on the facility will look like and the new warehouse will look like. With that, we're available for questions and hope you'll recommend approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a member of the public that wants to speak. Dave Luhon? Hi, Dave. You have up to two minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dave Luhon. I'm here representing Stucco Supply Co. of San Jose and the Smith Family Property Management. I'm also the executive secretary on the Board of Directors for the Monterey Corridor Business Association, and on behalf of the MCBA, we want to offer our full support and have submitted a letter of support for the modernization, renovations, redevelopment, and improvements that Granite Rock is proposing. Stucco Supply Co. is a local stucco manufacturer, which was established in nineteen fifty-five. As fellow manufacturers and handlers of some of the same materials, we can appreciate the plan that Granite Rock is proposing. We can also appreciate the longstanding reputation Granite Rock has in the community. The positive impacts of their plan cannot go understated. As an association that represents many small businesses and manufacturing facilities, we feel it is vital to retain these types of businesses that help provide living wage job opportunities and help to build communities around us. We, as an association, want to embrace the mix of industrial and commercial businesses in our communities, as well as continually strive to improve the quality of the communities we work and live in. The Monterey Corridor Business Association appreciates this opportunity to speak with you tonight, and we offer our full support to Granite Rock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Did the applicant want to abstain from its five minutes after public comment? That's a yes, signified by yelling in the audience. Okay, great. Now we'll come back to commission. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yeah, just curious question for the applicant. Does this project, or will this project increase the number of jobs at this facility?
Yes, it will increase the number of jobs on the site. So typically now there are about twenty-nine jobs. That will jump up to approximately seventy-five on a regular basis at peak demand times, because construction materials go in cycles in peak demands. At peak demand time, we could have ninety to ninety-two jobs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cantrell?
I'm curious if we have any record of issues with the current operation of this site that might continue on, or any concerns from any part of the community, or any citations from the city?
Code enforcement complaint type of thing?
Yeah.
For the purpose, through the chair, this is Myra Blanco with PBCE. So for the purposes of SEQA, we look at the odor complaint submitted to BackMed. So that's outlined in the document. For this project site, there weren't any complaints, and so significant complaints would be considered if there were five or more confirmed complaints in a year averaged over three years, and those were not present for the site.
Good, I appreciate that. Also, just, it sounds like some pretty substantial and significant improvements are intended after we approve this going forward. Is there any guarantee those things will actually happen?
Do you have a specific one, Commissioner Cantrell?
Any and all.
Any and all. Staff, any and all.
Well, I mean, if they move forward with the project, they don't have to move forward with the project. They can do so at their discretion, but if they move forward with the project, they have to implement all the conditions of the permit. They can't selectively decide to do A but not B, so that they're obligated to...
Okay, so we should expect to see those improvements actually take place? Okay.
That would be a question of the applicant about them moving forward, but if they do move forward again, yeah, they have to do all of the, fulfill all the conditions of the permit.
And I'm seeing you nod your head yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ornellis Wise?
Hi, how are you? I grew up very close to the site. I went to Underhill High School, and the vacant parking lot that's next door is the drive, the Capital Drive-In, you know? I've gone there when I was in high school, go to the flea market on occasion, and I know with inflation right now, so many more people are going to the flea market. I see that place packed with families and children, so of course, you know, I care about the people in the community because I live there, right? And I enjoy the community. I also commend you for all the work that you've done there and for all the employment and for increasing employment, as I'd like to see it, you know, get modernized. One of my concerns is that the trees along the front edge of Monterey and some that front the flea market right there, it looked like the ones, a lot of those are like large, mature trees, and I don't know, maybe staff could go in more detail, but I didn't see any tree replacements in the area along that abuts the Capital Drive-In, where I know there's so many people that go, right? As you could see even from the aerial photos, I mean, it's packed with people. So I just wanted to know, I mean, obviously, it looks like you're going to be improving the site, so it's going to look better, but I just wanted to know about any tree screening because currently there is a lot of trees there on that specific site, but looking at the plans, I didn't see any tree replacement in that specific area, and if there was any way to preserve any of those trees.
Yeah, I can answer that partially, and then I can defer to Eric and Pat, but they're retaining about a hundred and thirty-seven trees on site. Most of those are around the perimeter, particularly on Monterey Highway there. The rail line that they're building out will go straight down the side that's along the drive-in theater, but the trees, and I believe I'm going to defer to Pat, but the trees that are there now are actually on the drive-in side. Is that right, Pat? I was looking at it today, and I think they are. I think a lot of those that are on the drive-in side are on the, or excuse me, a lot of those on the drive-in side are actually on their property, and there's really not many trees. There's no trees being removed on the Granite Rock property on that side.
Okay.
If you look at sheet three point O, the site plan, it actually shows you which trees, there's little Xs, shows you which trees they're pulling up.
Can you pull it up so we can...
Yeah, hold on.
I would say the Arbus report has a better diagram of all the trees.
True, too, thanks. Page ten.
I don't have it handy, though.
Appendix C, page ten.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there is adequate screening for folks that are not only on Monterey Road, but also that are, you know, enjoying the drive-in, enjoying the flea market or whatnot. I would just like nice landscaping, something that looks aesthetically pleasing there, I guess, you know, something that looks nice would be nice. Tree screening would be ideal. And I know that I read that it was a twenty-four-seven operation. Is that something that's being proposed, or is that currently, what is the current operations in regards to hours of operation?
Eric Shanauer, representing Granite Rock. It is, it always has been a twenty-four-seven facility for a number of reasons. First of all, the municipal code allows industrial properties to operate twenty-four-seven anywhere in the city. That's what the code says. But the reason in particular we are twenty-four-seven is because Union Pacific Railroad only delivers materials overnight between midnight and five AM. And we have to meet the construction needs of construction projects, and we have, a lot of construction projects are generally during the day. If you're building an apartment building, an office building, Levi Stadium during the day, but when you do road paving, that's at night. If they're paving one oh one, or six eighty, or rebuilding a roadway, that's at night. So we have to be available to provide, receive and provide materials pretty much twenty-four-seven to meet the construction needs of the valley.
Yeah, I'm familiar that a lot of quarries are twenty-four-seven.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make, you know, know and clarify if it was increasing operational hours.
It's always been that way, and will just continue to be that way. Yes.
Let me just look at my notes here, make sure I'm not missing anything.
I can also confirm that those trees are on the Westwind Drive-In site. Let me zoom in a little bit. Just for context.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, no, good job. Yeah, I like it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Young?
It's, thank you, Chair. I'm very impressed by this project. I'd like to thank the owner, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but thank you for keeping this facility in the city of San Jose. I know that a lot of times you'll hear about folks moving large industrial operations like this out of the city because of cost, so we're very grateful that you're keeping it here. You know, a facility that will provide well-paying, blue-collar jobs, as well as, I would imagine, a good amount of sales tax to the city for all the materials that are sold. To me, this is a no-brainer. This is a win-win project. Not only is it a really good project, but it provides a lot of environmental benefits as well, and amazingly, no residential impacts, which is something a lot of times we struggle with. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation.
I second.
That's a second. Okay. And I know we have Commissioner Rosario still on that.
Yeah, I was just curious. Right now, I know across the street, across Monterey Highway, there's the VTA parking lot. Is there any plans to change or to build anything there in the near future or down the road?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So that, there's, right, there's the VTA parking lot, there's a number of underutilized lots used for car storage or truck storage and various things. So, yeah, so council, as part of the four-year review of the general plan, as a result of the task force recommendation, which was as a result of the Monterey Corridor task force recommendation, a lot of added those properties and essentially as an urban village. It's called the Capital Station Area, Planning Area, and we are in the process, it was put on pause because the staff person left the city, but we have someone now, so we're restarting it, but we are doing a planning effort for that real, pretty small area to look at redevelopment, allowing redevelopment of that, those properties for residential development of some kind, TBD.
There's no submitted application, though, right?
None at all. This is all a planning process, but we're, the city's leading with the council, well, it was with Maya Esparsa, and now with Councilman Roduon. So we'll be initiating that again in the next month. So there is a plan to allow housing along that, in that area.
I think, certainly for the project, but I think, would that eventually affect any urban village that was put in there?
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm not sure the question.
It's more of a comment.
Okay, got it. Great. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious more, just as a general question about that. How does that, because I mean, I'm familiar with, you know, situations where you have existing residential, and there might be industrial proposed near it, but how does that work when you're proposing new residential near an industrial facility? How is that accounted for?
Well, they'll certainly know what's there.
Right.
But, Michael?
Well, I mean, I would turn it over to the SEQA team, you know, the way the SEQA, well, so I don't know, I would ask the SEQA team that question, actually.
These are all what ifs at this point.
Sure, I'm just curious in general how this works.
There is existing residential in the vicinity of Granite Rock that's adjacent to the sites that could be redeveloped to housing, so I'm sure they probably would have looked at that issue.
And to respond to your question about future residential, there's general plan policies that also speak to protecting, quote-unquote, protecting industrial from the encroachment of residential uses onto especially heavy industrial, so they'll be required to do studies also to see if placing residences near an existing heavy industrial use is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Young? Speaker?
Thank you. One other thing I'd like to say is, you know, you hear a lot of criticism about California and our environmental regulations and how we can't do business here, et cetera. Well, this is a great example. Again, thank you to the owner of a project that is taking place in California. In San Jose, we do have very, you know, strict environmental regulations, but the owner is going above and beyond to do that, and I would imagine you're still making money, or you wouldn't do it. So it's possible to do, and I would thank you for the project you're bringing forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, certainly, the importance of this project and how, of the business and how it's supplied so many construction projects is very impressive, and I think owning the property for a hundred and forty-four years probably helps the applicant move forward with this process, because if they didn't, I don't know what would happen, but certainly, having these uses in San Jose are important, because otherwise, those materials are being trucked in from outer areas with all the variety of negative environmental impacts. So I know that there is a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? We'll vote. Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Ornellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is our final item from the public. Michael, you're making a gesture?
Yeah, no, we're done, close here. I just want to make one comment, and that is, I just want to congratulate the general plan team. This is their first annual review report and their first annual review where they brought items to council. I just want to note that the general plan team that we had for a number of years all kind of, all pretty much left at the same time, about a year and three months ago, and there was really no general plan team. Laura was hired, and she was the general plan person, and then Sanhita was hired, and most recently Rena, so they had to kind of reverse engineer a lot of the processes, particularly the annual review report that you guys read tonight, so, or talked about tonight, so I just want to thank them and say great job.
Thank you very much, planning staff, all your professional work in advancing the general plan and all the other initiatives that are land use oriented for the city. Moving on to item eleven, item A, report from city council. Is there any report from city council?
Oh, there is.
Okay.
Sorry. So there was two massive rezonings that we did per the state law SB thirteen thirty-three to make the zoning conform to the general plan designation, hundreds of properties, and they were both approved by a council. One was eight thirty-four, and the other one was something similar to that. There's pages of them, two hundred and fifty-five properties. Then, I don't know if this would have gone either, but there was a Burbank annexation and rezoning that on Antiques Colony.
We got that item, yeah.
Yeah, West San Carlos, they approved that one. Then there was a big office development, redeveloping the infamous Frye's site on Brokow and eight eighty with one point nine million square feet of office. Wow, so that was also approved by council. There was, let's see. Yeah, there was the specially used historic permit for nineteen North Second Street. That project was deferred. And then there was also another annexation on Burbank and West San Carlos that was re-noticed to March twenty-eighth. And then there was an appeal on the Apollo Residential Project on Stockton Avenue adjacent to Caltrain, a future high-speed rail. That was, that appeal was dropped at the request of the applicant, so that didn't actually happen. And that is all I have.
Michael, just a quick question. Did the... Did the temple, the Cambodian Buddhist Temple project go to the council yet?
I don't believe so, but I'll defer to Robert.
It's going on March 28.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. And I believe our next commission meeting is April 12, unless staff anticipates any cancellation.
Not that we know of at this time.
Okay, good. All right, well, welcome back, everyone. Thanks so much for your, all your hard work as commissioners, and all, as we allotted staff, complimented staff for all their hard work. So we'll see you back on April 12. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn.
Is the parking validation box at the top of the room?